May I entertain a motion except minutes from the prior meeting, please?
So moved.
Second, please. Tim? I'll second it.
All right, I was muted second.
All in favor, please, may I?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda. I apologize, I wasn't there for last month's me, I mean last meeting last week. Tim, thank you very much for taking it on. Maureen, do you have the agenda? Could you state what the next agenda item is, please?
Um, let's see. Compliance Department to regularly send updated reports to committee members.
Okay, is that anything, is that really a discussion or is that just a point of interest that we, it was brought up and it has been agreed on, I believe? That Eloy.
Well, I could, I could, I could comment for a second, Melvin. I think it was mainly Fiore's item and I agree with him that we should be getting regular reports on the different projects that are, that are in progress. Not just the, I think he was saying not just when we have a meeting, there should be regular, you know, monthly reports or whatever the agreed upon timeframe is. So that it doesn't become a special thing to put out a report because we have a meeting. It should just be coming out anyway. So that was the point of the item, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lindsay or anybody else, but. I don't know, it, it, I'm just returning home from my car. I didn't see who was on his, is Che on or Eloy?
Eloy's on.
Eloy, yeah.
The reason I asked it like that was because it's not a new issue. That's something goes back over a decade. You know, as terms of trying to get reports or whether or not, who would get reports. Remember a very contentious meeting years ago where some members of the committees expressed disinterest in having to look at reports on a weekly basis. Fiore at that time said he would do it and I, and.
I would say, um, I would probably say a monthly report would be sufficient. For myself.
Yes.
And for the workload of the department. With the understanding that if we do have two meetings in a month, we will not have another report to review. It will just be that one.
I think what he's, yeah, and actually what I'm thinking, first of all, I don't want to overburden anybody. I know everybody's short, not just in municipal government. But the ideal that, like four more, I believe this was discussed before you were on the committee. And at that time, myself and other committee members eloquently stated that, you know, we had other business to do. Nobody wanted to sit there and go through the pay, weekly payroll. But Fiore did. So, um, whether it's once a month, he's not here. So I assumed that we're, but the, the ideal is that it's ability to be able to catch.
Can you come back in a little while?
Yeah.
Thanks. So, um, I'm sorry, I just had an inter, quick interruption, sorry. I agree, I did not want to see weekly payroll reports. I thought the department, you know, the compliance department at the time, Hope and then Che, et cetera, would be the people reviewing those reports. I agree with Lindsay, monthly is fine for me and I'm not sure I even need to see those kind of detailed reports. I, I just want to see summary level reports for the progress that's being made on our different targets.
I agree.
And, you know, on a monthly basis, that's fine. It just, it, the idea is regularity, I think to me is the idea that, that we have regular reports so we can look back and say as of July 1st, this was the, how, how we were doing on our different projects. And I think that was the point of Fiore's agenda item.
Yes, it is in the context of being able to catch things before the project's either done or three quarters of the way done. And then if you have a delay in meetings, you don't, nobody really knows. So Eloy or as representative for procurement, is that a, a difficult ask?
No, on a monthly basis, no. I mean, things are getting busier as the summer comes on and other things that we're doing, but Shay said that he would do the best he could in, in, you know, and, and working with the, you know, committee.
Okay, well, simply like what was we sent out last week with the Homer Street, the big Y project, you know, if that's sent out on a monthly basis and if specifically to, to Fiore, if you send it to me, to Tim, we read it, we don't read it, but you know, and, but if, if you already can get it, that's fine. And that would be greatly appreciated. Any further discussion on that particular issue? Um, Maureen, second item on the agenda?
Discuss hiring practices. Fiore will throw out documents to committee members in reference to a court case. I reached, I reached out to Fiore, he didn't respond to me.
Okay, I understand from an email exchange that I witnessed that he was supposed to afford some information. I guess it was coming from some outside attorneys. That information was not shared, so it's probably a mute issue to be discussed, but we can, Maureen, can you continue it to the next agenda?
Yep, recruiting, good faith efforts and what is being done.
Hey, Tim, Ma, Ma.
I'm sorry, was that a new, I heard you say, let's continue that, that thing to the next meeting. Were you still commenting on that, Maureen? I couldn't tell.
No, 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 this is, this is the next item number. This is for recruiting, good faith efforts and what is being done.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, I don't, I, I think this was, this came out of our frustration that some of us had that we weren't able to meet some of our numbers and I think if I'm not mistaken, particularly Springfield residents. And, um, was it Charlie or, or I'm sorry, the man from Fontaine or something that was, had some success and some stuff. And we just started a discussion of how can we capitalize on the success some people are having with local recruiting. I think Charlie made a comment about, you know, just recruit for that particular job. You make it more of a career and encourage people. And that was, that was the discussion. That's what I remember of it. Anybody feel free to chime in and, you know, how we can improve recruiting, I think was the, and getting sprinkled residence, I think was the general idea.
Well, actually I wasn't privy to that part of the meeting, so I apologize, but if anybody wants to chime in, I know, once again, this is not a new issue. Actually, I guess the first thing that I can, in my mind is, is that could Charlie or even Fontaine talk about the ability to recruit people regardless of where they live, since the, the specific conversation seems about, about residents. I can't go into a restaurant where I can get good service anymore unless it's, you know, unless it's small and, and family owned. And every grocery store, every business I go to, my friend just opened hype, a Jackalope down at the Old Doffel site, he's hiring. Is, is this issue of being able to retain or acquire residents exclusive to the construction trades or is this just a national trend?
I, I can speak to Fontaine and then Charlie. I can tell you that we've had great success working with the, with the carpenters, with Liz and most of the unions have been good as far as understanding the requirements of the REO and, and helping us achieve that. We have some disciplines that are not signatory with the unions, their file sub bids. On our job at the Berry, we have Griffin Electric, who's a non-union company and Adams Plumbing and Heating, which is a non-union company. So we don't really have the luxury of going to those unions and, and having the resource there. And that's just part of the file sub bid laws. So as far as we're fortunate, I thought about this a lot after our conversation and maybe I, hopefully I don't get too far off topic. But we're, we're very fortunate at Fontaine. They're a, a size company that we can afford somebody like Liz that her whole job is to recruit and, and participate and make sure that we total line with, with this requirement. When you get into some of the smaller projects and some of the smaller subcontractors, they don't have the revenue and/or the capacity to really do this the right way. The way that, not necessarily we're perfect, but I, I think we're, we have a pretty good approach to it. I'm a construction guy. I build things. That's, my job is to answer to Peter Garvey to make sure that the job gets done on time and the mayor Dominic Sarno, when the kid's got to get to school, that, that's kind of what I'm good at. Liz is good at, you know, making sure that the right people are in place. But having said that, you have to have the right people. And we've had, we struggled with some of those other disciplines, getting people and even with Fiore's group, we, he's signatory with the ironwork, he's the ironworker guy. They didn't make some of the numbers. So it try as we might. And we had him in the office. We, you know, we, I, I know him personally and it just, we, we can get who we can get. And I, I'm a guy, grew up in Springfield all my life, went to school with Dom Sarno, I went to Commerce High School.
We won't hold that against you.
Yeah, but I just don't, uh, there's, I think something needs to be done on a higher level with the city of Springfield to get people interested in these trades. I mean, it's hard enough. Most kids, and my kids included, they don't want to be swinging a hammer. They'd rather be on a computer, right? So getting people interested in it is, is a challenge to begin with. And then getting people interested in, in the distressed areas is even harder. So that's just my take on it. So I'm a construction guy, like I said. I'm just sharing my, my viewpoint from my advantage and that's, that's kind of how I see it. We know the obligations, we're doing everything we can. We reach out to the churches, to the neighborhood councils. You know, if somebody comes in, you know, we get them to the appropriate parties. I don't know what else we can do. You know, you can't put a gun to someone's head and say, I want you to, to swing a hammer. It just, just doesn't work. So.
Yeah, and we've also had some success placing folks from Community Works, for example, it's a prayer partnership program ran out of UMass Amherst. We, you know, certainly, you know, we made a connection to some folks over at Stick. So we are trying to reach out to as many people as possible to make sure that is, especially our non-union contractors as they're coming to us. That we are, you know, reaching out to these already established relationships. You know, but then the reality too is we've had some, but we have one specific contractor who I'm thinking about who they've called every single person that we've, you know, reached out to, but for whatever reason, you know, folks aren't returning phone calls, you know, they take on another job. You know, so they're, you know, those things are also, you know, happening, you know, at the same time. But we, you know, that hasn't stopped us from, from pushing as hard as we can.
And Melvin, I think we're doing good with all of the categories except for the, the Springfield residents, the, you know, minorities, women, the veterans. We're meeting and, and are exceeding those. I think, what was it, Liz, for the minority participation?
Thirty-four percent.
Yeah.
So I've just put them, yep. And the, for residents, it's twenty-one percent veterans, it's seven percent, and for women, six percent.
Well, the unfortunate thing is, is, um, this isn't, this conversation, just like the one we just had before, to me, is not new. I can remember when we had, there was training organizations and nonprofits that were supposed to recruit. Lisa, you, you've been here long enough and, uh, the, the past president, this is a conversation that's been going on. The only difference now is, is that we're two years after the start of COVID, but there was a problem trying to recruit people. We started off with the REO, getting the apprentice programs struck down in court as a part of this process. That goes back, that strike down of the apprentice programs that was a part of the original REO goes back thirteen years. That shows you how long I've been doing this and that same conversation back then was how do we get people into the thing? So Charlie, I, I, you know, I think if I, not speaking for Fiore specifically, but as I looked at the numbers that were circulated recently, it seems like overall Fontaine has done a really good job. The carpet unions have been champions on this issue for over a decade of my involvement. They're not our problem. But this, the specific trades and, I mean, even not calling out anybody, you know, any particular contractor by, but it seems like there's specific trades. Now, I understand and have great appreciation for the whiteboard installer who needs to have specific training to satisfy the warranty, but it's those, it's those, as you go through the numbers, I think if there's any disappointment, it's those specific trades that consistently win the bid or consistently are moving from project to project, but have a history of not being able to satisfy it. And I can hear Fiore's repeated comment, well, they signed a document at the start, they said that they could fulfill this. They knew it wasn't a part of the obligation of the contract. And then once they start, then they have, they can't find enough people. They didn't know, they couldn't find people to start with. And I think even with, you know, with, everybody would recognize if they're going to consistently be involved with the money and the city of Springfield is booming. Post-COVID, I see nothing that's going to pump the brakes on construction locally. They need, or it would, it would be beneficial to them in the spirit of what we're trying to do if they expand it and put effort into recruiting people through their apprentice programs. I'm breed.
Charlie?
Yeah, um, first of all, we, we go over the big jobs and the companies like Fontaine and Daniel O'Connell are big, they're diversified, they make every effort. And, you know, we can work on some numbers and, and we have, they talked to us, Fontaine talks to us, has the contractor talk to you about people of color? Have they talked to you about residents? And we, we go back and forth. The real issue I see is the smaller projects that are kind of feeders, the companies that are growing. And I use them as an example. I don't know them. When I looked at their numbers last, the last meeting was Marion Excavating. Because they do three or four REO projects a year and consistently they come up short every time. And it's like, it's a one job. Uh, you know, they're going to do three or four other jobs, whether they're, whether they're getting TIF, TIF money or something that falls under the REO compliance. But every job we look at that as a new, new job for them as opposed to as, uh, looking at their business model as a whole and saying, if you're going to continue to do this work or we tell the developer, you're going to hire that same company to do your excavating. That we're not going to honor the TIF if you can't, if they're going to consistently not beat the numbers. And it's the smaller projects that really are the bread and butter for us. And I know for the open shop, the big jobs are great. They put a lot of people to work. They're flashy, but the small jobs that are, you know, three or four month projects, those really keep the economy moving, keep a lot more people employed over a, a long period of time. And we kind of, it'd be nice if we focused on those, the same frequent flyers who come in and do three or four jobs a year, a subcontractors who don't meet the requirements and they, they show no improvement. That would be a way to help improve the numbers and, and it all translates to the bigger jobs. And the second thing, as far as recruiting, that's, that's a can of worms that we've been, we've been telling people for thirty years, don't do what I did. Don't be a dummy, don't be, don't work with the hammer. And now all of a sudden we wonder why no one wants to be in the trades. And, uh, and there's a lot of people, the trades are a path to a a middle-class life that they didn't have before. And, uh, we need to change internally ourselves, the culture, society, you know, to tell people, these are honorable jobs. What you do for a living. It's, you work with your hands, doesn't, doesn't make you less of a person. It means that you're, you're, you're getting an opportunity and you're running with it. These are good paying jobs, but they're very difficult jobs if you don't like the work. And I look at us as, as like playing for the Yankees or the Red Sox. If you're going to be in the trades, union trades are the ones that give people health insurance. They retire with pensions and we have no shortage of applicants, but we have shortage of, of people that really want to do the work. We do go through a lot of people to find out that as apprentices that the trades aren't for them. First, the first day in August out there is usually a wake-up call when it hits ninety-five degrees. But that, that's ours to work through and, you know, we appreciate any help we could get on that, recruiting people.
Eloy, could you, I hate to put you on the spot, but the frequent flyers, um, the companies that were identified, I'm not naming anybody specifically, but he does have a point. If you, it's, it's not the Fontaine, it's not the O'Connell, it's that, it's that company that does excavation and others like him that we know are going to be back when the next project goes out to bid. And maybe even Maureen, you can chime in or something. I know, you know, I expect that, you know, this is when, when we like to have, I'd like to have a lawyer in the room because as soon as we start talking about how to restrict access to the contract by the frequent flyer, then usually that's when the law department comes and slaps me around a little bit. And luckily, you know, I like, you know, nevermind, I was going to say something about having a good time. But, um, either Eloy or Maureen, could either one of you just kind of like, just speak on that part of it? Because it's not, once again, I mean, I, 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 I don't know what to say, except, um, I think this is part of a conversation this guy, that has evolved over time where we know there's certain subcontractors that are not going to, when they, when they sign the paperwork. If anybody is, you know, doing this work has been paying attention, Eloy's newest one to the table. But even for Che, who hasn't been there as long as some of the other people that have cycled through over the years, you know, they're not making it when they signed their contract in the procurement office that it started a bit. They have a history of not making it, but yet I don't know if somebody can speak on whether or not what we can do about that other than just cajoling and you know, kind of chucking and jiving with them about trying to do better.
Oh, good. Just based on my experience, uh, one of the things that we did in the past was to develop a, a list, actually, actually developed a, a database just for residents where they could actually go in and apply, put in an application and, and, and employers could go in and, and, and find workers. And, and that, that helped, that helps some. One of the things that I also find that makes it difficult is that when you, somebody signs a contract and then they have to go out and find residents. And so you have the process of, of, of searching, of interviewing and, and that takes time. So it's good if you, if there was some kind of list that they could go to, but I, I, I mean, the Department of Transportation always has that problem. They have, you know, they, they, they have the right intention. But it, by the time anybody finds out about the project, it started and, and it makes it a lot more difficult to, uh, to achieve the goals and requirements. One of the things that I also like to say is that you look at your population and you remove your women and children and folks who are simply not interested in, in construction and, and, and just and it, it just, it just dwindles down. And so, uh, and, and then as, as more projects come onboard and, and and you have large project and small practice, it's going to be even more difficult. So I really wouldn't be, you know, say, don't beat yourself up too much on that because it is something that you really have to work at. It, it's, it's not that simple and you, to, to, to achieve those numbers. But I, I think it's important thing is to try to meet them any way possible. That's working with agencies like Liz says, maybe developing a database. After using the database we had, we just simply put something, a spreadsheet together and talked to different agencies. Second chance programs are, can, can be good because those individuals might have got some kind of training while they were incarcerated or they're also driven to change their lives. So there are a lot of different ways to look at this.
Well, I, it's, um, I can remember years ago when we did, we were creating lists, uh, we were, we had lists of organizations that were doing this type, that type of work. The one that could, I mean, I see to understand and appreciate the value of residency, but it, that blade cuts both ways. Because I've explained to people and I've tried to say this many times is that Springfield, uh, in certain ways is, as an urban center, a stepping stone community. Because the thing is, if you're low income and you need, if you need public transportation, you don't move to the suburban communities. There is no buses. So, um, you know, I, I had a conversation recently with, you know, the president of Westfield State, you know, she wants to have a campus in Springfield, but the first thing out of her mouth, it has to be on the bus route. You know, one of the candidates for lieutenant governor, I think auditor or something other, but one of the candidates we were talking about, he takes transport, public transportation all the time. Well, he has, in Boston, what public transportation looks like is not what it looks like here in Western Massachusetts. And if you're talking about public transportation, it's exclusively, there are Holyoke or Springfield entity that is not very efficient compared to other parts of the state. And so the thing is, is once you, even if you do take a job in construction with a resident, as a Springfield resident, when your income rises to a certain level, now all of a sudden you have the option of moving to Chicopee, to Agawam, to West Springfield, to one of the other communities that is perceived to have, give you a higher quality of life because it just opens up more options. Your rent where you can afford to live, where you can afford to move around it and where the services that you need to be available to. Very complicated, certainly more complicated than, you know, than being able to, you know, have, to be in what we're trying to deal with here. It's just, you know, it's, it's, um, it's one of the things that I've had to deal with mine, you know, for years and I understand it. But then when we apply it to trying to find enough residents in the city of Springfield that are willing to work, I mean, the carpenters union helped to get the study that suggested that a large number of the females and residents in the city that are working at CNAs could be making a livable wage working in construction. I don't see a translation between the publication of that data from UMass study having an impact on the ability to recruit people locally for these jobs.
And Melvin, it's a common problem where individuals, once they start working, they move out of the area for those reasons you mentioned. And even just to get away from, as you can, you know, quote, quote, boys. You know, they, they've, they've made a lifestyle change and they want, they have to, they get up every morning and their friends aren't doing the same thing and they don't want to be influenced. So it's a lot of reasons why that happens too. So that's, that's a very good point and it's a common problem.
Yeah, I mean, I remember having this conversation about Boston and what under Manino in the construction project, things that were going on in that city. And what I was trying to explain to people, the, the neighborhood affiliation or loyalty to your neighborhood of birth in the Boston area is not the same as it is in Springfield. I mean, even in Springfield, when they talk about our gangs and stuff, I mean, the Knox Street Crew that doesn't get along with the people up on College Street that don't get along with the people down on Burr Street, that don't get along with the Bristol Street Gang or the North End. I mean, the thing is, is within a matter of months, the people on Burr Street now live on College Street or they do live on Biddle Street, Bristol Street. And, you know, so those are, you know, social dynamics, sociology type dynamics, but they, they're, it's real. And this is the things that we have to deal with. You know, if you're transitioning out of Department of Corrections, you come to the city of Springfield because you need, you know, you need to be able to get to your probation officer every once a week. You can't be living in the suburbs or somewhere where you can't get there. And then, you know, next thing you, you, it's just, it's always more complicated. But as complicated is, it's not an excuse for us not to try. And I'm not, I'm not dissuaded from trying and I appreciate all of you guys helping us to do what we're doing. But to the expectation that we'll ever reach perfection, I think it's a fallacy. We just do the best we can and eliminate excuses and create opportunities. Any, I, anything else that we, Maureen, my, I know I'm rambling a little bit, so Maureen, get me back on, on point, next agenda item, if there is one.
It is just to update the workforce report on those Homer de Barry school project.
Okay, Tim, you had something you want to answer? Ed?
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, we just had that discussion, but we don't, I'm not sure we have an action item and you know, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but we put the, the general, you know, a couple of years back, we said, well, let's not judge the numbers on a subcontractor basis because they're too small to necessarily be able to meet those numbers with their hires. But let's put it on the general contractor to make sure they meet the numbers or overall the general contractor does. And I mean, I'm not sure, I, I mean, I'm the gentleman that's here from Fontaine, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on your name.
Frank.
Frank, sorry. Um, like you're a general contractor, are you guys trying? Are you guys trying to? Not only make the numbers for your own employees, but for your subs as well? Is that, that was the idea at some point?
Yeah, well, that's, that is exactly what we do, not only for our, our own staff and personnel, but. You know, we have Liz's full-time job is dedicated to working with the subcontractors. Working with the Charlie Pains and uh, you know, the Masons Union and working with those people to help. The subcontractors get to where they need to be. I think on a whole, just Liz put the numbers up there. We, we're running seventy to eighty people on that site per day, and we're at thirty-four point five percent people of color. That's pretty goddamn good.
That's really good.
You know, when I walk that site. It, it's a different look than when I do a job in Shrewsbury. I mean, there, there is an effort being taken there to make this. What, to, to live up to the obligations we signed up for. Like I said, the hard one for us, and I don't have a good answer, is the residents. We try. It's just, you're, as Melvin said, you know. When, when people start doing well, they, they move out, and that's, that's sort of a double-edged sword.
Oh, I see what you mean. You hire somebody from Springfield, they work for a while, they get a certain level of income and they can move out of the city.
Exactly, yep.
All right. So, well, my question is, and not to put it on you, but just since you have the perspective of a general contractor who's facing this every day. When, when we get your numbers, do they include the subs on your job, or are they just your numbers?
Yes, yep, it's the full listing, yep.
Yeah, it's broken down by individual company.
Yep, so, I'm not, obviously not looking at the report as I'm asking this question, but, so. It's really, when meeting ends today. Where's the action item? Is it on Fontaine? Is it on all of us? Is it on somebody to talk to? The school department to do a, but, you know, I'm, if this is an ongoing problem and, and the way Frank just described it is happening. Um, if there an action item, we should be taking as a group in the next month or two.
Well, I, I know that, I mean, if we go back, remember there was a lady, I can't think of her name, but there was a woman who was training women on how to restore windows. Uh, and then she was, there was an organization that was running out of stick, there was uh, out of the other side, the uh, an entrepreneur side of stick. That was recruiting people who were unemployed for construction trade. These, the ideal, uh, and we are, we had them on the list. There was a time when we had a list and it included the Urban League, it included the NAACP. It included uh, Neighbor Works and even some other working agencies, um, Esperanza, I think was on the list. The New England Farm Workers.
Yeah, so what are we gonna, so what do we do now about, we had that.
Well, I mean, okay, so, I mean, I, that's what, I don't know, um, that's the thing is, is I, I'm not hearing anything new.
So.
I'm just thinking is, is, my thing is, some of these things, as much as we're just satisfied, they're not solvable. Not by us, without, and that's where the law department comes in, because then once you start talking about mandating and forcing things. Which comes into play, which from the law department is, you have to have the lo, the, the lowest qualified bidder. And the lowest qualified bidder, nine times out of ten, will not be a Springfield-based minority company with a bunch of minorities on it for these subs.
Right, but I'm, I, I'm not trying to get at the punishment thing. We clearly, I said I would draft a letter. About Big Y not making their number after getting a TIF, and I, I will get a draft around. I'm leaving tomorrow, so I'll get a draft around in the next twenty-four hours of that letter, and I'll send it around, and you guys can enhance it. But, uh, it's not, but I'm not talking about punishment of people, I'm just trying to like, Frank is sitting here. They're doing their best and, uh, you know, two of you who work there are doing your best. And do we just keep going with the way we're going, and if we make it, we make it, or is there a legitimate? Action we should take about going to Putnam or going to Danny Warwick, or I don't know where, going to all these. Different unions with, is, is there something we should do as a group, um, that makes it better? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I just, I think we should ask whether there's something.
I, I don't have an answer, but please, anybody who has an answer to that, please offer it now.
I don't, I don't have an answer, uh, cuz it is a very difficult uh, endeavor. But when it, I, I think we can push to work in uh, more. With local businesses and uh, and, and, and encourage them to uh. Get certified uh, through uh, the state also, uh, but to just start pushing. Uh, local businesses that likely to have uh, Springfield residents to uh, work on city projects. Uh, that's, that's one thing. I mean, uh, but, you know, just keep pushing. And uh, doing the best we can.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure, yeah.
Um, can, can we separate the uh, the compliance reports by filed sub bids? And by uh, general bids, um, because uh, as from my experience. The uh, Fontaines, DOCs of the world can influence uh, contractors that work directly through them. Much more than they can with the filed sub bidders. Um, and we can, and we can help track that. And, and the other, you know, I'd like to bring up. The other thing, uh, like the Forest Park Operations Center, I mean, a forestry center. That's, I believe, Marroy Construction out of South Hadley. Uh, they have Valley Concrete over there. Um, I mean, uh. Uh, they, they have probably three or four people. They've done uh, several REO projects in the city. And they have the same crew that comes in from Bernadette and Greenfields. Um, and, you know, at, at some point in time, uh, we might wanna send a letter to say. Marroy Construction, you brought in a steel erector from North Carolina. You bring in the same crew from uh, the uh, Franklin County, Massachusetts. Um, is there any effort at all for you guys to uh, uh, just explain yourself? I mean, these guys are doing the big jobs, the Fontaine, they come in every month and explain. Everything they're doing and everything they're asking me to do and everything I'm asking them to do, to comply. But like I said, these small jobs feed the big ones. Um, and the contract, no contractor wants to. Uh, remain a small contractor. They, they wanna get bigger, they wanna grow, they wanna expand. And uh, and we have to, and if we're gonna, and we talked about focusing on the general contractor, or focusing on the subs. Well, when it's, when it's a big job like this, we kinda have to focus on the subs, uh, because. They have more people uh, probably over there on the drywall crew than the Forest Park Operations Center will have on the entire project. So as a, a job of that size, we need to actually focus more on the general contractor. Uh, on a bigger job, we, we have to look at enforcement as two, two prongs, depending on the size and the volume of the project. And the uh, like I said, in the filed sub bids, in the general contract bids. And, and if we could separate those numbers, I think that would give you a better idea of how much influence. Um, the Fontaines of the world and the DOCs are putting on the subcontractors. The ones that, you'll find the ones that comply, are the ones that are working directly for them, as opposed to working in the filed sub bid category.
Eloy, it, I was gonna say, Eloy, is that, um, two things, one. Is it, is it inappropriate without lawyer being here to tell us we can't? Is it inappropriate for us to call in Marroy and, and construction and ask them, or have the same type of conversation about their inability to? Um, you know, you keep coming, just straight outside, you keep coming back, you're coming to bids, you're not, you know, and you're never satisfying this. Um, is, is that, may, Marvy, Maureen, one of you guys, somebody tell me, is that appropriate for us to call them in individually?
I would have no idea if that would be appropriate. That's a, that's a legal question.
Yeah, well, I mean, then, then I, you know, that's, that, if, if you wanna do something, I think that's, that's an appro, if as long as. Long as Kathy Breck's not gonna yell at me about it, um, then, yeah, I, I'm okay with calling them in, having the conversation with them, um. And if, and if, and even if she is gonna yell at me, and let's, let's do something and then we'll.
Who, who are you, who are you talking about that's gonna yell at you?
The law department.
So we just, so just call the law department and say, it's what we're planning to do.
The thing is, is this is what happened, I'm not afraid of, of, I just, I'm being facetious, the point is, is that. When we have called it, remember when we tried to call a quadro and Seruti? We hadn't had anybody, a law department's in person there in six months, and soon as I said I wanted a quadro or Seruti to come in. Kathy Breck showed up the next meeting and told me about open meeting violation. So, and, and we should have a lawyer, now that we have Ken Shea as the attorney for the city council. Maybe he should be read in on this committee and he should be a regular member, attending of these committees, so he could have, give us legal advice as well.
Yeah, great, I got a good idea.
Okay, but, in the short term, Eloy, is it, uh, could you, uh, well. We all sent out the invitation, that would be the Eloy or Che, Che's not here, so Eloy, could you ask Marroy? Uh, Construction and, and Charlie, am I correct, is that the company that we would want coming in about the forestry that you just described? Consistently does contracts and never fails, brings in contractors from North Carolina?
Uh, I, that's what they're doing on this job, but they've done several projects in the city. They, they're a frequent bidder. And uh, I, I don't see any efforts on that project. Of course, they're not, we don't even have a report in front of us from them. On that project, and the building's just about up.
Elizabeth, cuz, oh, that wouldn't be Elizabeth, Eloy, can you get that as information circulated to the committee? Extend an invitation for them to come down before us, and it doesn't have to be, uh, we just wanna have a discussion. Um, on uh, their ability to satisfy the requirements of the REO as it was, you know, presented to them.
Their numbers, they, they could be doing it, I don't believe so from my visits over there.
Right, why don't we, is it all right, first, if we ask a Lloyd to put a report together on any information we have for past projects? I don't wanna just go one hearsay, that they haven't been meeting numbers and have them come in. Um, I would prefer to see the data that we have.
Sure.
I'm sorry, this is a conversation I surely would wanna have with Shay, who has history and is the director.
Yes, and that's, and see, this is actually what I'm alluding to, is, is I don't wanna start down a road where we're, we're violating anything. But Tim asked for what's the next steps, or, you know, what should, you know, action items, so. If this company is one, uh, let's first verify that if the, the information as presented is accurate, if it's accurate. Then we'll find out whether we can legally invite them for a meeting, and then we can have a proper conversation. And hopefully have a lawyer or somebody there to keep us from violating anybody's constitutional rights or any procurement law rights or anything.
I don't believe it, I don't believe it's inappropriate, and I believe that uh, REO would cover that. As an agreement that they signed and committed to.
So, so could you just run it past, uh, collect the numbers, run it past Che? Uh, and, and, and if, uh, if it appropriate, whether you, whether it's at the next meeting or the meeting after. Uh, if the suggestion that they will be coming back from future contract, cuz I know the city's gonna be building more stuff, and if they're gonna be a ready contractor. Then we might wanna have a conversation, I'm just, uh, uh, explaining what our expectation, whether they feel it. Whether they have to, or they ignore us or not, but at least we, you know, we can have a conversation, which is, I think duly appropriate.
You know, maybe one of the questions we can ask legal too is, if we can incentivize. Uh, the, uh, a contractor who does meet the numbers. When, and, and during the bidding process, and that's something to talk about with legal and procurement. Where we actually can get points, uh, that could help them uh, win the bid. And that's with the history of meeting the numbers.
Yes, really, that's an excellent idea, cuz it, it can't always be just stick, it's gotta be some carrot in there as well. So that is an excellent ideal, Eloy, but, and hopefully, um, we can get somebody with a lot of this, tell us what, whether that's appropriate or not. I mean, thing is, is, it being, you know, um, I know in some construction situations or circumstances. There's penalties for failure to reach the deadline. It'd be nice, maybe perhaps, if we could reward contractors. With a, uh, with a bonus or something other who not only bring it on. Or bring it in on time, but they're actually meeting the numbers, but, you know, I don't know if that's appropriate either, but. Maureen, anybody else, before we move on to the next item, is there another item?
No, it is, public speaker.
Uh, I don't think the public has had, been hesitant at this point, but if anybody else like to add anything, certainly, this is a time to do so.
Melvin, I, I had one thought, and this is, I'm looking at these numbers, and uh. The one thing like, so Fontaine is doing a seventy-seven million dollar job at the Barry Homer. We're also doing another city project, Elm Street. Other, I think it's, I'm not the PM, but I think it's thirty or forty million dollars. And it's the same REO requirements, or, or there's requirements for the same thing, so. That resource of people starts to get sp- spread out even, even stretched out even thinner.
You know, Lindsay, is, is Elm Street is, uh, is not under the REO, is it?
I might, I, I, I would assume that what would have been is city, it's a city project, or maybe it's a private job.
Well, but, but, but Melvin, it is a private job, or it's always, but we did put public money in it, there's about ten, ten million, there was four, three.
We put private money in Union Station and had no oversight.
Well, then that's a, I mean, I remember that, but.
I do.
Thing's a good question, so.
Well, that, I mean, he, he brought it up, but I, I don't think, we do, maybe we do, but I don't believe we have oversight of, uh, well, Elm Street's been. Well, you know, it's been operating for how long now, they've been working there, we've not gotten any reports, anything from Elm Street, so.
So even if you took, if you step back in history.
I do, I do think that REO, um, it has to do with it being a city project and not only city funding. Because the city does give funding to private, you know, for private projects or uh, private public partnerships. Um, so I do think that that's probably why Union Station wasn't included, um.
With federal money.
Yeah, it, it's, the project is owned by somebody besides the city, so the city-owned projects are what fall under the REO.
So, so Lindsay, on that one, just for a sec, um, but Big Y is different because it got a TIF, is that the difference?
City Council, um, amended the, um. Um, ordinance to include the REO language in the TIF. Um, I myself have personally been confused by that, because the REO states it's a city-owned project and TIFs. Um, are not for city-owned projects, so I always kind of was confused by that language, um.
I think, I think with Big Y, the thing was, is that we approved the, uh. If they wanted the five million dollars, they had to write the language in, or else we weren't going to approve the TIF. So it was an agreed upon oversight, that they agreed in order to get the money, which is hopefully what we're gonna be trying to do with other tests moving forward is. When they're coming before the city council and asking for us to support public money being used. We, they can write it into the contract and agree to it, but we don't, we may not have, uh, by federal state law. The, you know, the, the right to force it upon them, but we don't, we don't have to approve the money, that's, I think that's how. We did Big Y, and maybe somebody, I mean, I wish you already knew, somebody could verify that, but I believe that's how we did it, Tim.
I mean, the reason, the reason that we were able to get, or the reason why we did look at Big Y numbers was specifically because there was a TIF involved, that's correct.
Yeah, and I.
So, so, so Elm Street doesn't have a TIF? But, so, I mean, this is a Ken Shea question or something, so I, it's another, but it's time, if we're not sure. And it gets confusing on the Big Y TIF, but the Elm Street money doesn't count in the same fashion, even though it was more money than Big Y got. Um, well, it's time for a clarification, so let's ask Ken.
I'll follow up with Ken, uh, you know, I, matter of fact, we had a conversation this morning, but we didn't get into this, we talked about some other things. But I will, uh, he's full-time, he's, he's strictly for the council, so. Uh, I'll follow up with Tim, and by the next meeting, I'll have better clarity about that. And if, if he doesn't have a clear answer right then and now, I will ask him to. To seek the answer so that we're better prepared and to have a discussion on it at the next meeting. Maureen, could you include this issue on the next upcoming agenda?
I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if I could just say one thing, I think, Melvin, it's time for us to not be excusing ourselves. Um, we used to have contractors in all the time, and we, and we would grill them about how they were hiring. Or how they were recruiting or finding stuff. And I know times change, and that was too much micro at the time. But if, if we're not meeting numbers, it's time for us to be more, a little more. Aggressive and not excuse ourselves for it, but say that's what our job is. And um, and if Ken, if Ken would be great to clarify that, to look at that, he understands, having been on the council. Well, just see what he says.
No, Melvin, I, maybe my, my, my analogy wasn't what it should have been. My thought was, if the city of Springfield had two schools going on at the same times, which they often do. They often have a school or a library, and, and these requirements are, are in both of them. Your, your source of people to, to.
I'm alluding to pull.
You're alluding to pull, is, is all I was alluding to.
And I think, I think that's part of the goal is.
And I think, I think that's part of the goal is to continue that by having these policies, it's, it's putting pressure on the industry to continue to expand the pool. And so when these young people are graduating from Putnam or a pre-apprenticeship program or stick program, that, you know, there is increasing pressure on different contractors to hire local residents.
And when there's two major projects going on in one city that has the re, the residency requirements, that, you're absolutely right, that's gonna, dilute the pool. And there are, I know that I put three or four city residents to work at thirty-one Elm Street. Um, so that, that has drawn some of the folks away from it. But as far as overall population, um, that, that is the goal. Um, my goal, my goal when I leave here is that it's better than when I started. And it's better for everybody. And everybody includes everybody, not old white Irishmen that are bald. Um, uh, or the, the people that, you know, every, the door's gotta be open, everybody. And everybody's a resident, everybody's a taxpayer, everybody's a citizen. And I go to Las Vegas for our training, and I watch the old guys that come in in my group. And, uh, and then I watch the group of third-year apprentices that come in. And I tell you, it's a tale of two cities. And, uh, and that's what we have to do. And, and you know, there's, those goals are easier. They should be easier for us to meet. The women, minorities, um, and those goals. The residency, I understand. With more projects going, there's less residents. There's only a, there's a finite number of residents in Springfield. And, uh, uh, I agree with that. But yeah, that, that is the goal, to continuously improve, and, uh, expand the diversity.
Okay, we have to wrap up. Uh, so anybody, any other discussion or comments can be shared through email. Uh, Focus Springfield needs is to, uh, move on to the next meeting. So I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Uh, and, um, Maureen will reach out with the schedule for the next scheduled meeting and we'll do that through email.
No, more, uh, um, motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, please say aye. And thank you all for your time.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, we'll talk. And thank you, Focus Springfield.